All right, thank you for coming to the meeting. I'm being patient, it is 7:25, opening our planning board meeting. Before we look at the last meeting's minutes, I would like to suggest and consider a potential for a more formal approach to the meeting in response to the way it has been the last meeting. So I think that there's great value in us being able to have a conversation and include everybody and make it informal and comfortable for everybody. There is, you know, the right way to do it is to like, everybody talks to the chair and everybody like, you know, it's, I don't want to have to go down that road. But I think we need to reserve the option to if we aren't able to keep a steady course on the way things are proceeding in the meeting. And I also like to talk with the rest of the board here about what we'd like to do if we have clarity tempers, if we have loss of control of the meeting. And I'd just like to hear what people would have to say about that. My goal would be to run a meeting that is inclusive, but also doesn't let itself lend itself to devolving into a chaotic condition. So any thoughts from other board members about that?
I think you're right, I think there's inherent value to having some of the people that we, way back when, decisions were made, that have insight into it that we don't. But if it starts to get out of order, and that kind of thing, it kind of falls on you to whack it out.
I mean, I want to listen. This is going to be the only joke of it I'm going to make tonight, but, I mean...
You know, she said we should all stop being rough fools.
Whatever.
But something along those lines.
Yeah. Brian, sure, what do you have to say?
Did you get that gavel from Thor?
I, yeah, I, yeah, it must have been Thor.
Better for this guy.
Right. No, she'll get it at some point.
Yep, number two.
Thanks, Chris. Have any, okay.
Pull it together.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to contribute about the way that we conduct our meetings? And any expectations that we should clarify?
I mean, yes. People being off to speak and take turns and talk and, you know, about what's running, definitely necessary. But it's getting out of hand, and it's disrespectful, and we can't bring it back. I think the meeting needs to, you know, there needs to be some stopping point. Because having that kind of...
I mean, I agree. Maybe every person said, as far as interacting with the things, but I think there needs to be no interactive sport.
Say that again, so the chairs can hear us.
I think, you know, if you know, then there needs to be a reminder, this is a spectator's sport. This is not an interactive sport.
Sure.
The public is not allowed in to interact. The public is allowed in to see what happens. Well, the board has a meeting.
I mean, that's the...
It's a reenaview.
Right, that is the...
Except for the time for public comment, or somebody wants to raise their hand, and the chair wants to, or the board, somebody, whatever, wants to give them the opportunity to speak.
I mean, I don't have a problem with people raising hands, like, in the middle of the meeting, if they have it to mago to contribute. That is totally legit.
That's totally up to you then. I don't have a problem.
Okay.
It's only matter of whether it gets out of hand, and it does, and it's up to you. So, okay. Those rules are suspended, now we go the other way around.
I mean, I don't have the particular RSA handy, but, I mean, there is, like, we're not allowed, legally not allowed to disrupt a public meeting to the point where it doesn't function. So I don't, I don't know how to cite that. And I don't know if anybody here knows specifically what RSA to go to on that. But, I mean, I think the end of the story is that we would like to be inclusive, but I'm going to attempt to pay attention to if things are getting a little bit heated, and maybe try to add, like, a little bit of formality if that is the way things end up going. I don't know if anyone else says anything. I mean, Emilio, you bring up a good point, that it is hard to bring it back once there is sort of like a disrupted, disrupted kind of atmosphere. Okay. We're all set with this? Is there anything that anyone in the crowd would like to contribute?
I would assume that your meeting is being run by Robert's Rules of Order.
So it's not, and mainly because it's a pretty long set of rules. I mean, in theory, that's often been something that's been done at town meeting. I don't know if we necessarily, I mean, we can discuss that. I know you suggested it.
I'm not suggesting Robert's Rules. I consider Robert's Rules a last resort. Each board
Right.
has the right to either adopt or adapt their own set of rules.
Right.
Provided there is an opportunity for a public comment at some point.
I, I mean, I would love to hear what you think about Robert's Rules. My personal relatively uneducated opinion is that it is a longer book to read than any of us have time to nail down.
Well, I've never been to one of your meetings before, so my apologies if I'm, see I got a balance here, but, but, Robert's Rules of Order, you can adopt certain principles and sections in Robert's Rules of Order that can clearly define how people communicate with each other, how much time they get to spend on a particular topic. You can identify all those things and make it your own.
Right, okay. Well, I mean, maybe we should take a look at that. I don't know, I mean, certainly look at that. I mean, I think that if we maintain just a general flavor of civility and keep tabs on it, things are getting at all heated. And I'm not necessarily going to, like, everyone in the room is responsible for keeping it on a, an approachable level. Okay. Why don't we look at the minutes from July, the 22nd of July? And in the meantime, perhaps we could take a roll call of us, and we've got Tom Guti, Mia Kishin, Angus Forman, Carrie Whitney, Sabrina Carwin. There, I mean, we can go around the room and just say names, because some of us know everyone, and some of us don't recognize some people. So Catherine, you want to start? And we can kind of work our way through.
Councilor Moho.
Mario Riley.
Brian Fellers, there, there. Rich Angel is an alternate.
Dan O'Grady, my wife.
Marcy Niss.
All right.
Paul Ho.
Yep.
Sharon Clark.
Nicole Fossey.
Got all the papers. Yep.
Six seven.
You got some?
I do.
Okay. Do you have any pens, anyone?
Nope.
You got them? Okay. All right, so let's just look these over and see what we think. Anyone have anything?
Can we make it clear that what was done with the letter and, you know, reading?
What we stated is what's in the...
You're saying the attached letter was neither written nor the that part? What was done with that note?
It was kept on file, not further used by the towns of Oakville.
Yes, yeah, so I gave a copy to Sue, and I put a copy in the planning board file to provide to anybody who requests it in the future. And it's, 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 the attached letter was not written out of that little short paragraph, and then attached to the letter which I wrote, which MVP sent out.
Okay.
So those are together in the planning board file folder.
So you're not adding planning board folders, is that what you're saying?
No.
It's a little bit...
What you said there, I'm not upset with that.
All right, anyone want to make a motion to?
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Do we have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, let's move on to correspondence.
I think usual.
Yeah, you got a Town and City and a Supply Lines flyer.
Not for that.
Considering this is a open, I imagine, open. Jeez, and there's an upside down oil truck on the cover of this.
It's my scan board.
Yeah, you should have opened that. So we have a couple of correspondences from various people here. Some of this stuff is on hold because we haven't had a meeting in a while. So we got a letter from the Office of Selectmen about hiring and firing meeting minutes, accounting policies and procedures on 2022 budgets. We're not hiring or firing employees. And I don't know if we're necessarily affected much by this. I'm going to take a peek. Okay, there are three bits of correspondence. If we're all set with all that of the correspondence, there are three pieces of correspondence which relate to the disorder that occurred at the July meeting. So we have a letter from Sutukowski to, to the planning board, August 10th. Dear Board Members, I am writing to you as a 43-year resident, taxpayer and citizen of good standing of the Town of Crafton. I raised my three children here and have contributed my time, energy and money to making our town a great place to live over the years. I recently watched the recording of the meeting of Crafton Planning Board that was recorded on July 23rd, 2021. I am writing because there were things that occurred during that meeting that I find distressing and downright embarrassing for our town. Some of the comments made by some of our town officials were defamatory of individual members of our community, both past and present. Although names were not used, it was clear to those present of whom they were speaking. I am concerned that this type of speech could possibly put the town on shaky legal ground if those individuals were made aware of it and chose to take action. Some of the audience members were allowed to do this as well, and nothing was said by the members of the board about inappropriate nature of these comments from the public. I have also noticed this happening during some other town board meetings. The meetings are available online to be seen by anyone who wishes. I would think our town leaders would want to show a civil, positive, polite and orderly meeting rather than let us see at these meetings. I hope this will be addressed in future meetings. Thank you for your attention, Sutukowski. I called her when I, when I received this, just to see if she wanted to share anything else. And I think she was concerned about some of the attitude we've taken towards MVP and related people. And she also was concerned about your behavior, Brian, and how the board at the time did not do anything about it. Let her speak for herself. Or I know you like to speak for others. Okay, so Brian, Brian, now. This is what this is for, all right? We're here for... That's what that's for, okay? Don't speak for other people. All right, you have one more chance before you're out. Okay. Okay. You can, you can speak at public comment. You'll have ample opportunity to do so. And if you'd like to raise your hand and have a question, I'm happy to entertain that. But please, let's not interrupt. Thank you. So, I mean, I, I think she brings up a good point about, you know, it's been addressed to me a few times that, like, I didn't control the meeting. And by a few different people I've talked to in the past. And so that's the nature of our discussion that we tried to have, that we just want to keep this civil, keep it from being interrupting fest. Brian, you got a question? No, I'll let it. Sounds good.
Left on the side.
Okay. Any reaction to Sue's, to his letter? I feel like she...
I can see how she feels, yeah.
Yeah, she makes good points, and we can just try to, I mean, this is just a theme of civility across the board that we're going to shoot for. Okay.
Do you feel that anything besides your phone calls would be needed on that?
I mean, she should watch the minutes of this video. Uh, or she should watch this recording. I mean, I think the goal is for nobody on the board or in the audience to talk trash about anybody, really. I think that's, if we start with that, then let's just kind of move along with that. Okay. So I have two correspondences from Brian Fellers. One is on August 24th, to the planning board. I am sorry, I am unable to attend tonight's planning board meeting. Angus just told me the meeting will be canceled if I show up. I received a call last week from Angus Forman, Chair of the Board, to let me know some members of the board were made uncomfortable by my tone of voice. I reorganized my schedule to be able to attend the regular meeting on Thursday, August 26th, to address the concerns in person. Angus was unclear about a secret special meeting that would be closed to the public in order to protect anyone's reputation. I think this matter should be held at a public meeting and be able to videotape it in the public presence so we can address whatever concerns the board has. I will be unable to attend this evening's special meeting as my work will have me out of town. I would like the meeting videotaped so I can better relate to the concerns of board members. If a picture is worth a thousand words, the video may be worth millions of words. Thank you for taking time to read my letter into the records. I will look forward to addressing any outstanding concerns at the next scheduled meeting on August 26th, 2021. I hope Russell will be able to attend to make sure the meeting is held in an orderly manner and keep politically inspired debates safe for taxpayers and their private property. Peace, Brian Fellers. I feel like there's a reason to clarify the course of events, that we were, after the events of July, July's meeting, we hoped to have a meeting to discuss security and the way that the board meetings were held. We scheduled the meeting for the Tuesday before the normal Thursday, August meeting. We were hoping to have a non-public session by RSA 91A, at Gary's suggestion, which I think is probably valid. We shouldn't hold, we were advised not to hold said non-public session because the clause providing for us to do so was reliant on Brian's not wanting to be there, and Brian wanted to be there. And so we decided to hold a public session. And then we received this letter, which I just read, and then the police chief's recommendation, the police chief then recommended that we not hold any meetings that week. So we did not hold a non-public, we did not hold public, and did not hold a normal August meeting. Does anyone have anything to say about that?
Brian, what's up? I would like to say something. I was arrested four weeks after the meeting. And I turned myself in to face the accusers. And so, yeah, I was arrested.
So that's not the planning board's choice or business or responsibility?
Okay, I'm sure it's not your responsibility.
It is...
Showed himself, didn't he?
It is, it's the police chief's discretion to have arrested you?
Was he at the meeting?
Russell. Okay. All right, so all right. Tom, what's your take? Okay. So the final piece of course comments that we received is to the Town of Crafton, this is on September 2nd. To the Town of Crafton, I would like the meeting minutes and all public records and correspondence for the non-public planning board meeting held on August 24th. Angus Forman spoke to me that day and told me a meeting was held and four people attended. I want the names and any other meeting minutes. This is regarding RSA 91A, sincerely, Brian Fellers. We compiled a 91A request through Sue Smith, including including a short letter from four of us, you know, confirming that there was no meeting held in, in August of 2021. And so I think I, I don't have the 91A there in front of me, but I did not tell Brian Fellers that a meeting was held and that four people attended.
You realize there are witnesses here.
So this is not a courtroom, Brian, but I'm simply...
All aware it's going to go to court, trust me on that.
We're, okay, so I'm, that's the correspondence, that's what you wrote, and the board made it clear that no meetings were held in August. So that's, that's where we're going with that. So I don't believe we have any new business. I know Anson Smith had wanted to organize subdivision, but I think he's been waylaid again. Our goal, you know, of refining our subdivision regulations and the subdivision application, I haven't hit any headway on specifics there, but I welcome any thoughts from board members about about if anything has come up in people's minds about how we might like to change things or keep them the same, or, you know, anything like that.
I loved the ones that you did with the, you know...
Yeah.
And you added a little more space here, a little less up there. Kind of gone off track on that, but...
No, they said to be terms to clarify. That's about it. I mean, there's no reason for actually going to change a whole lot. Not so. Simplify and clarify, I think, for our board.
Hard to argue with that.
So, I mean... I see no reason to change that.
Okay, well, I would like to move along. I, I think that for the October meeting, we could maybe take a closer look at our regs and application again. Maybe we can pick away at some of the sections and decide if there's anything that we want to change. So I think I think we're trying to go through, like, sections one through six. And Nicole?
Yeah, where can, or can residents see what's going on with subdivision regulations, applications? Is there a place?
Right. So, so the subdivision regulations are posted on the town website. And I think the, any subdivisions that are in the process of being done are usually just available through the board, through the meeting minutes, until, until they've been filed, until they've been completed. I mean, if there's any ever, anything that you're curious about, you can ask, and we can, we can clarify what we're doing within a particular subdivision, or come to the meeting that, you know, where a particular subdivision is occurring that you're curious about.
Our original thought to, to look at the regulations was the fact that the document is 28 pages long. And we were, we were hopeful that we could, you know, cut it by two-thirds and just make it more simple and easy to read. But it seems now that that's kind of standard.
Yeah.
Like, we're just trying to take parts that might be ambiguous or confusing and just clarify, and not, not looking for big changes, just simplify and clarify, as Gary just said.
All right. Well, let's, let's see about going, spending some time looking at the section one through six. Well, let's see about going, spending some time looking at the section one through six for the October meeting. We could try to confirm. The legitimacy of the RSA that you mentioned and decide if we want to use any of the. Exceptions or exemptions or not, or edit those so that they are clearer. So. That would be my hope for October is to not waste our time with anything in particular and just talking about the regs. And if we have something on the agenda, then we can approach that. Tom, is there anything that you have to say from the select board? Okay. Is there anything anybody else would like to contribute in the crowd here?
Did you want to update the library and stuff?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. No, 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 I, no, no, it's, I'm so, yeah, for sure. What you got?
Well, we've had three of the four meetings so far. And what we've done is we've come up with mission statements, visions, values, strategic priorities. They're basically doing a top-down approach to what do you want the library to be involved with? And again, it starts with the mission and it comes down to the visions on how you apply all that stuff and what values need to be looked at in order to accomplish it. Some of the things like we've looked at the values, relevance of all ages, backgrounds, abilities should feel welcome, respected, well-served. Core library programs should be free of charge, careful and creative stewardship of the library's financial material. These sort of things, they're, I mean, somewhat reasonable, not really roughshaking in many respects. The only thing that really stands out, I mean, right now, at least in my mind, is as far as the mission statement, I've mentioned this before. We're trying, the board decided to look at enhancing the mission statement from strictly library stuff, providing the public with books and pamphlets and things like that. To getting more involved in community affairs and having. Increased the social activities for the town, things like not just book clubs, but maybe sewing circles or. Certain other activities the town may want to look at to increase the social opportunities. And if looking at it so there has been some talk about the relationship between the need for a new community center to accomplish that. Or can we use facilities like this building here, other buildings in town, the churches or other options that we may have. As far as. Going further and coming up with an implementation plan, we have a rather detailed Excel spreadsheet that is a draft plan right now. To me, it looks like it's more of a plan for coming up with a plan. It states that we're going to come up with short-term goals and. Three-year plans, five-year plans, and we have certain strategic priorities that I mentioned here. Improving communications with Crafton residents, the objectives that we. Need to satisfy to get there, tasks that we have to do to. Enable us to meet these priorities and of the elite, who's responsible for it. It's usually the trustees of the library, certain volunteers, the director. And again, there's five of these so far. Improving communications, developing group programming, I mentioned like book clubs and things like that and. Working with nearby libraries in other towns and trying to increase collaboration, increase engagement of volunteers. And coming up with issues to close barriers to the library's mission, how we identify those and what facilities we may need to look at to improve. Our ability to meet those goals in the future. And secure grant funding, optimizing library operating hours and tracking and learning from utility and. Tracking and learning from activities and utilization of data to help us track how we're doing and. Come up with some measurements to help us decide in the future. I'm not sure exactly what to expect from our final meeting, if you will. It's been kind of subjective. We may go a little bit beyond that to try and get a grip and get some. Consensus as far as where we go from here, but I don't see it being something that is. All-encompassing right now. It's just like I said, we have a plan for coming up with a plan. Even though we have some of the line items to look at here, there's not going to be anything that we can point to to say. This is what our facilities look at and we'll have to come up with a way to evaluate these things in the future. That's just my take on it. Maybe some other people will have some other ideas. But one of the things, I was just wondering from our perspective is. What, if anything, do we want to have to say or to be more involved with? In looking at this plan? Do we need to look at this implementation plan in more detail? Before we agree that it's something that we want to sign up on or do we just want to say the group that's involved now is good enough to go from there? And when we get more data from these studies and we see what kind of activities. The library comes up with and what success those have and perhaps rely on a future meeting or a future. Approach that the select board, they want it from us. I mean, what's my take on that? Do we really have a proposition right now or just kind of a wait and see kind of thing?
I think your participation, your being our liaison is. A big thing for us right now, just keeping us informed and. Someone to give the direction and this. I didn't hear anything that I thought we would need to address or take action, but it really is a service there for you to. To be involved with that and to keep us informed.
Okay, and now I suspect, I guess, I'll just put the next meeting, what happened at this meeting and.
Right. Do you get the impression that anybody on the library strategic planning committee has a. Like a hard-line agenda in any particular direction? Or is it pretty open-minded?
Well, I mean, it has been open-minded. There are some people that have opinions on what they want to see. There's still some people that think that the current facilities we have, like these buildings, aren't going to be adequate for some future programs that they may want to come up with. Just how valid those programs turn out to be as far as participation and. How far that goes means to be seen, but there are some people who let's see the cities improved. Do we do that through a library process? Do we do that through a joint process with the town, with the select board? Again, that's something that I don't have a good grip on right now and I'm not sure that this committee, if they're recommendation, might be around yet. But yeah, I mean, there are certain people that have some different opinions. But one of the things that I was very happy to see is that we're coming up with some approach to look at data, to look at different options. And those options will be considered in conjunction with, for instance, facility questions. Whether we can stick with the current facilities we have or whether we need to. What the process and how that shakes up, I mean.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nicole, what's up?
Just a question, maybe silly since I'm new, I may have missing information, but have there been any residents surveys? That have gone into that, what they would like to see, what we would like to see?
There were some detailed surveys that were discussed and they were analyzed and fed into this process. One of the things that we're trying to deal with now is the weighting, if you will, of those surveys and. How you take that data and how you go and use it. I mean, it's one thing to have a survey. People say, yeah, I'd like to have all these activities to go to, but how many people actually show up? How do you evaluate that? What weight do you put on that, you know? These are some of the things we're trying to deal with right now and that's part of the implementation plan that we have drawn up. And I mean, it's just a draft right now. And we have a lot of work to do at this next meeting to try and finalize that and come up with a consensus. And whether we get that done at this meeting, hopefully we will. But whether there's some more work to be done there, I don't know. A moment ago, but we'll see.
Thank you.
Right on. No, that's legit. Anyone else? I'll make a motion over here, all right? Okay, all in favor?